I'd like to call this meeting to order. John, would you lead us in the pledge, please? Ann, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Vice Mayor Saleh.
Here.
Mr. Keenan.
Here.
Mr. Gerber.
Here.
Mayor Lecliter.
Here.
Mr. Reiner.
Here.
Mr. Nissi Zerker.
Here.
And Mrs. Boring.
I'd like to begin this evening's meeting with just taking a brief moment of silence in memory of the Creator, who tragically died in Arizona attempting to control the fires and protect the public. Thank you. Beginning this evening's meeting with a few special presentations or one special presentation and a proclamation, this evening we have the National Parkinson Foundation of Central and Southeast Ohio. My understanding is that we have Brian Altup, Chair of the Board, and Joe Erb. Board member, would you like to come forward, please?
Yes, thank you.
Could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Great. My name is Joe Erb, and I live at 4548 Braithway Street in Hilliard, Ohio.
Okay. Brian doesn't want to join you, or?
I think I'm gonna go to the head.
Okay, that's fine. Okay.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. It's nice to be here on this side. In addition to being a board member, I'm also a member of Hilliard City Council, so I get to do what you do on alternating Mondays from this week. Today, we're here today because we're trying to present some awareness to this foundation. The National Parkinson's Foundation of Central and Southeast Ohio has a distinct message. And at the bottom of this first slide, there is a quote from our chapter president. "Our local chapter is dedicated to provide the care until there is a cure." While there's a lot of folks that are out there trying to raise money to find a cure for Parkinson's, our association is there to provide care for those that are affected. We are meeting with city councils throughout Central Ohio just to get our message out there, provide you with a little bit of information. So I'll be brief. An estimated four to six million people suffer from Parkinson's worldwide. It's the second most common neurodegenerative disease after Alzheimer's. The big thing is that people's perception of what Parkinson's is, is it's thought to be an old person disease. As we have seen, more and more people at younger ages are being diagnosed, and more and more people that are diagnosed at younger ages are coming forward. Unfortunately, there were so many people that were diagnosed that felt embarrassed in some way of their diagnosis, so it is important for us to get our message out there so let them know that there is something here in Central Ohio for them to have. Let me try to find out where I am here. And I'm not going to read through the slide. I'll let you guys, I sent it to your clerk. One of the things that we are doing here in Central Ohio is we have 26 support groups. We send out 3,000 monthly educational newsletters, and there are 10 exercise and speech therapy We provide services in and around Dublin. While we don't have anything specifically within your city limits, as you can see, we have support groups that are close that do provide service to the residents of your city. Wanted to provide you with a couple of things. We have some events that are coming up. Just wanted to let you know about our upcoming events. We have a car show, a night flight, and our biggest event is in October.
October?
September, end of September. It's our moving day event, and I provided the clerk with some cards. Just letting you know that we are just trying to get our message out there, and just wanted to present you this information. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Marsha, are you aware of the programs we're offering with, that's aimed toward Parkinson's? Or is that through the senior citizens or another group?
I believe there may be some educational elements that they have as part of the senior group, but I'm not aware of the specific programs, but we can provide an update for council.
Okay, thank you.
Brian, did you want to add something? If you have to come forward, please. Sorry.
To that end, if you are looking for educational programs, please reach out to our agency. That is actually one of the things that we try to do as well. Our President, Dan Davis, goes out to, you know, senior citizens' homes, to places like this, to do full education programs where you can do that. So if there's a need for that, absolutely, reach out to the office. Dan Davis would be great to help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Excuse me. We have a proclamation with respect to National Parks and Recreation Month. Fred Hahn and Matt Irman would join me at the podium, please. And the proclamation reads as follows. "Whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the city of Dublin, and whereas our parks and recreation programs are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region. And whereas parks and recreation programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally or physically disabled, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens. And whereas parks and recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. And whereas parks and recreation areas are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community. And whereas parks and natural recreation areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of the air we breathe, provide vegetative buffers to development, and produce habitat for wildlife. And whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for our children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. Now therefore, I Timothy A. Lecliter, Mayor of the city of Dublin, on behalf of Dublin City Council, do hereby proclaim July 2013 as Parks and Recreation Month in the city of Dublin, Ohio, and urge citizens to explore our parks and participate in some of the special activities scheduled throughout the month of July in Dublin."
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. You know, we are so fortunate here in Dublin to have an incredible park system, along with the amenities to go with those parks, and then certainly our recreation programs, and the participation in those programs, the support from the community is overwhelming. In concert with the National Recreation and Parks Association and several other parks and recreation agencies across the entire country, we're celebrating Parks and Recreation Month for the month of July here in Dublin. We're providing a slew of free activities for the public, some of which are individual programs and family activities throughout the month. So if anybody's interested, I encourage you to check those out on the city's webpage and hope that you all will get out and enjoy the parks. Some of you have been out to those parks. I'm hopeful that some of these activities will give you a new opportunity to experience them in a whole new way. So, thank you.
Thank you. We don't appear to have anyone signed up for citizen comments this evening, so we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Ask if any member of council wishes to remove any one or more of the three items listed on tonight's consent agenda.
I would like to ask a question about most of them in general, if I could.
I think that removes them.
Can I have a consent question?
What is your general question?
The general question is, when you offer contract to these people, many times we discuss the quality of the work. Is there some part in the contract that covers that guarantee, or the quality of the materials, or something like that?
Well, part of what we do before we make payment on their pay requests is verify that the work that they've completed complies with what they said they've done, and it's the quality that we require, and it meets our code.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Smith, is it your opinion that we can still proceed with these as consent items? Okay, thank you. If I could have a motion to approve the actions requested for the three items listed on the consent agenda? Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Ann, if you call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mayor Lecliter.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan. Mr. Nissi Zerker.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Great, thank you. Proceeding with our second readings of ordinances, beginning with ordinance 54-13.
Amending the 2007 Dublin Community Plan.
Thank you. Mr. Goodwin, good evening.
Good evening. As council recalls just from a week ago, we reviewed the proposed amendments to the community plan, including the new web-based community plan format. I'd be happy to answer any additional questions that the council may have, or to provide any additional review if you would like.
Any questions, comments, ready ones? Ready ones going twice. Hearing none. Ann, if you call for the vote, please.
Mr. Gerber. Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mr. Nissi Zerker.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mayor Lecliter.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mayor, before you move on, I'd just like to say to congratulate Justin in all of his hard work. These efforts are pretty tremendous and have a significant impact on the city, and recognizing that something like this is across the city, and many individuals have been participating throughout. We've had response from residents, P&amp;Z members, city councils. So even though it seems like it's pretty simple that what we just passed, it is something that I think has been the foundation of the city and just shows again the value that the city places on planning, and to say thank you to Justin for all of his efforts in guiding the process.
And, Marsha, thank you very much. I think we were, council was remiss in not stating that. You know, certainly we were impressed by the presentation that we received at the last meeting, and each and every one of us appreciates the effort that goes into something like this, having participated, you know, previously personally and so forth in the many meetings. But, you know, a Herculean effort, you know, there's no question. And, you know, it probably does look easy to the public, you know, at this point in time, but I think we all appreciate all the effort that has gone into this, and we thank you, Justin, you know, for your leadership and your efforts, and everyone else involved at every level. I mean, as you say, I mean, everybody is involved here. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. And I would just like to reiterate, this was truly a team effort involving a wide variety of city staff, and it couldn't have been done without all of their help.
Great, thank you. Ordinance 55-13.
Amending Chapter 32 of the Dublin Codified Ordinances to enact new Section 32.07 Community Service Officer Program.
Thank you. Chief.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. As you recall, last year we proposed a program that, to engage members of our community to help us keep the city safe. It's been our goal to try to engage the community at every opportunity. The Community Service Officer Program is one of those efforts. The candidates for this program, all are graduates of our first Citizens Police Academy. We have finished the selection process. The backgrounds are complete. They're ready to start training, and this would codify the positions, allow us to use them to direct traffic, enforce traffic laws, and that type of thing. And I can answer any questions if you have them.
So Mayor Lee completed that school, so she could be a candidate to do this. Would that be correct?
She could. She could.
She's got a lot of time now, too, I hear.
Fortunately for the public, I didn't apply.
Very good. Thank you.
Chief, how many individuals will make up this program?
I think we're going to end up with 10 right now. We have in our five-year strategic plan that it could go up to 30 in the next five years, depending on the interest shown by graduates from the Citizens Police Academy and our needs.
Do you think 30 is a manageable number of folks?
Well, we're going to know more after we get them on board, but yes, I think it is.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
I would just like to make a comment. I really want to congratulate the chief for doing this. I think that the police academy was an incredible experience, and I know you're taking applications now for this falls class, and I really would encourage members of council to consider it and people in the public. We always state, and we know that our police force is a very professional police force, but in taking the class, you learn an incredible, you have an incredible experience to really understand the depth of this intelligence that they have and certifications they have, and most importantly, the passion they have for both their job at this community as well. And I know of other police departments who have the community service officers, and they have had them for a number of years, and speak really highly of the engagement of the public in this. So I hope you'll report back to us periodically on how it's going and any additional training, maybe that's necessary really, as the graduates actually get operational and have to, you know, remember what they learned. But congratulations to you.
Thank you.
And to them.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Ann, if you call for the vote, please.
Mr. Nissi Zerker.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber. Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mayor Lecliter.
Yes. Great, thank you. Ordinance 56-13.
Amending Section 2 Wage and Salary Structure Administration, Paragraph A of Ordinance Number 7306, the Compensation Plan for Non-Union Personnel for the Purpose of Incorporating Certain Job Classifications and Corresponding Pay Rates.
Thank you.
Yeah, at the June 10th city council meeting, I had requested city council's consideration for two additional positions in our comp plan, one being a new position, the Director of Public Services, and a second position being a reclassification of an existing position, the Assistant City Manager position. And a lot of this relates back to creating a sustainable structure, organizational structure for the city as we move forward, and to look at and continue to focus on the significant investment that we have in public infrastructure. So based upon the discussion at the June 10th meeting, the legislation was prepared to create the two positions and slot them into the pay range classification, and this legislation does that.
Any questions, comments? Hearing none. Ann, if you call for the vote, please.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Nissi Zerker.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mayor Lecliter.
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance 57-13.
Authorizing the city manager to execute necessary conveyance documentation to accept the dedication of a 1.330 acre, more or less 40-foot-wide perpetual easement for utilities grading and a multi-use path from Sawmill Hard Center LLC.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. The owners of the Kroger Center at Sawmill and Hard Roads are dedicating to Dublin a 1.33 acre easement for utilities grading and a multi-use path. This dedication is a result of the condition of approval by the Planning Zoning Commission of their preliminary development plan for the retail center. The condition required that a bike path be provided on the west side of Sawmill Road, and that easements be recorded to the satisfaction of the city engineer that covered that bike path. This easement is necessary for that existing path that's in place, as well as for us to have the ability to relocate an existing gas main for when we do improvements to the Sawmill and Hardroad intersections. Staff recommends adoption of the ordinance 57-13 that'll authorize city manager to accept the dedication and have the documents recorded with Franklin County. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Hearing none. Ann, if you call for the vote.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Mr. Nissi Zerker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mayor Lecliter.
Yes. Thank you. Ordinance 58-13.
Amending the annual appropriations for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2013.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. This amendment is to the 2013 annual appropriations, and will provide funding for the city's initial contribution for the 270-33 interchange, which we are very excited about. As you know, the preferred alternative was selected, with the initial estimates coming in at approximately $92 million. Of that amount, the city of Dublin has committed funding in the amount of $17.25 million. At this point in time, ODOT is requesting approximately $3.2 million, which is why we are in front of you this evening with this appropriation request. And also, as outlined in your staff memo, we will be bringing forward legislation in the upcoming weeks, which will amend one of our existing TIFs, specifically the Rusili TIF, that will allow those service payments to be used for this particular project. That TIF, in conjunction with the Upper Metro TIF, will provide a significant amount of funding to pay for this interchange project.
Questions, comments?
Since they're requesting the money at this point, is, can you explain the timeframe that the improvement will begin?
Certainly. This $3.2 million is set to go towards the part of the detailed design, as well as the initial studies, and I know through different conversations, they are still expecting to commence construction in 2014.
Yeah, they anticipate completing detailed design sometime next August, probably, and then award the construction contract that fall, with construction being initiated by the end of 2014. And it's approximately a two-year construction time.
Can you remind me, the east-west connectors on 33 between 270 and Avery-Mirfield, that'll be part of that, part of those improvements? So that should be done by 15?
Yeah, it should be finished by the end of 2016.
End of 2016. Okay.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, hearing none. Ann, if you call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mayor Lecliter.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Nissi Zerker.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Ordinance 59-13.
Authorizing appropriation of a 0.201 acre, more or less fee simple interest, of which 0.178 acre, more or less is present or occupied, and 0.036 acre, more or less temporary construction easement from John L. Reynolds and Colleen Reynolds, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. This legislation authorizes the acquisition of necessary right-of-way and easements for the construction of the Kaufman brand roundabout. There's been no changes since first reading, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions, comments? Hearing none. Is there a motion dispensed with public hearing and treat this as an emergency?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ann, if you call for a vote, please.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mayor Lecliter.
Yes.
Mr. Nissi Zerker.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
And on the ordinance?
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Mayor Lecliter.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Nissi Zerker.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Moving on to the introduction and first reading of ordinances, beginning with ordinance 60-13.
Authorizing execution.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Are we going to read these together, or?
We can read them separately because their titles are totally different, but Terry will give a report that includes information on both.
Okay, so we're going to, do we want to read both of them?
Yeah, we would need to read both complete titles.
Introduce.
Okay, let's begin, Ann, if we could, with ordinance 60-13, and then followed by 61-13, please.
Authorizing execution and delivery of a development and tax increment financing agreement and an infrastructure agreement to provide for the first phase of redevelopment of Dublin Village Center.
Introduce.
I'll introduce.
Okay.
And then ordinance 61-13, authorizing the city manager to execute and deliver documents on behalf of the city to accept title to a parcel of real property within the Dublin Village Center and to transfer that parcel back to the original owner.
I'll introduce it. Thank you. Mr. Felger, good evening.
Thank you. This evening, again, this is just a first reading. I think initial information on this suggested we would be seeking emergency language this evening and action for a variety of reasons, including the timing of school district action on the TIF and some related business terms with the development team on this. I think all that's required this evening is the first reading. This really sets the framework for, we would characterize as, the first phase implementation of the redevelopment of Dublin Village Center, the economic development agreement and the infrastructure reimbursement agreement being the two major elements of the first piece of legislation. What those essentially do is lay out the private and public requirements associated with this first phase. The major element of the private improvements include the proposed development of the Edwards Housing Project, 324-unit multifamily development. Also included with stage one private improvements is the renovation of the cinema currently underway, as well as a renovation of Applebee's. I think from the administration's perspective, what we view as particularly of value and noteworthy, in addition to the very urban style of housing, which is consistent with the Bridge Street District, is the establishment of the grid in this area as the framework to guide future redevelopment. The elements of the funded public improvements include the incremental costs of the podium parking, which is one of the main ways that the particular tile, type of multifamily development has been accommodated here, and construction of as much of the public road system as can be leveraged with the available TIF revenue to create the road system around that multifamily project, as well as around the theater and opening up some adjacent development sites there. The infrastructure reimbursement agreement would provide for the Edwards Company to, as has been done in the past, implement the required public improvements on behalf of the city, and would have a reimbursement agreement very typical of those we've used in the past. The other piece of legislation before you tonight for a first reading, 61-13, simply relates to a provision of this specific chapter of the TIF statutes. I don't believe it's one we have used before, Chapter 41. Actually makes reimbursement for some private improvements and eligibility in cases where redevelopment is being done, and this is one of our first major redevelopment sites. And those parking improvements here at the end of the day will be privately owned and managed. To be eligible for that, the property has to be in the chain of title, albeit very briefly, probably for about a day. So the second round of legislation here provides for the city taking title and then turning title back over so that that statutory obligation is met. We would expect this to come, we'd be in a position to come before council for action at your meeting in August for final determination, at which point we would hope to also have made good progress on the final business terms and final negotiations with the school district on the TIF arrangement. The other things that are before you tonight, just to mention while I'm up here, that are related to this, will also include your consideration of an easement for a water line, so that that can be as development-ready as possible when the various agreements come together. And secondly, will be the approval of preliminary plat, also another necessary prerequisite step for the project to move to its next phases of development implementation. We will be asking that you take action on those this evening. These agreements, we will be asking for action at your first meeting in August. With that as a brief overview, we'd be happy to answer any questions council may have regarding this legislation.
Questions?
In general, I remember years and years ago when that bridge, the Moore Ridge, was being developed, we had concerns about water capacity. Now we're putting up 300 units. How are we planning for the water capacity and the size of the lines and just making sure that they have coverage for emergencies, whatever?
I think in the broadest sense, the, my understanding is, as part of the Bridge Street analysis, detailed infrastructure studies were done regarding all the basic infrastructure systems and their adequacy here. Obviously, as the permits get issued here, and both Dublin and Columbus do its reviews, that adequacy will be affirmed. I don't know if there's anything else that the engineer's office would want to add to that?
Just that we will actually be putting in loops, extra loops through this system. Fortunately, we do have 12-inch water lines on Tuller Village Parkway and Dublin Center
Just, just that we will actually be putting in loops, extra loops through this system. Fortunately, we do have 12-inch water lines on Tuller Village Parkway and Dublin Center Drive, and so we're making connections to those with 8-inch lines. And there'll be new line on the Main Street through John Shields Parkway, as well as one that loops on the Eastern Street. I can't remember the street name right now off the top of my head. So we are including looping the system to help with that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Other questions or comments? Okay. Hearing none, we'll have the second reading on August 12th of both of these introduced ordinances. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to ordinance 62-13?
Authorizing the city manager to accept a dedication of 2.71 acres more or less and 0.03 acre more or less fee simple interest for water line easements from Whittingham Capital LLC and a 0.26 acre more or less fee simple interest for a water line easement from Clearview Dublin LLC located at South Tuller Road, east of Village Parkway, City of Dublin, County of Franklin, State of Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
I'll introduce it.
Thank you. Good evening, Ms. Cox.
As Mr. Fogler mentioned, Dublin Village Center, the owners have requested to move forward ahead with the water line construction for the redevelopment of the shopping center. Engineering, as well as the staff from the City of Columbus Division of Water, will require that an easement be recorded and in place where these new public water lines are going to go before we'll actually approve the construction drawings. That way, when they are in and ready to be functional, we have access to them for the maintenance purposes. So in order to support the redevelopment of the Dublin Village Center and the developers' proposed schedule, staff recommends approval of ordinance 62-13 and dispensing with public hearing and declaring an emergency. Answer any other questions about the water system if I can.
Any questions? Property owner wish to speak for any reason? You don't have to. Very good. So then if there is a motion dispensed with the public hearing and treat this matter as an emergency?
So move. Second.
Thank you.
Can we have a reason for that?
Usually we declare a reason.
The reason is that the water lines have to be in before they can start their actual construction. The easement has to be recorded so that ultimately the safety issue is met, Kathy.
Okay. For safety, then. Thank you.
Okay. Anne, if you call for a vote on the emergency, please.
Yes, Ms. Nancy Zerker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh?
Yes.
Mayor Lecliter?
Yes.
Mrs. Boring?
Yes.
Mr. Gerber?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
And on the ordinance?
Mr. Gerber?
Yes.
Ms. Nancy Zerker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh?
Yes.
Mayor Lecliter?
Yes.
Mrs. Boring?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
And Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance 63-13?
Authorizing provision of certain incentives to Navidea Bio-Pharmaceuticals, Inc., to induce it to retain an office and associated operations and workforce within the city, authorizing execution of an economic development agreement.
I'll introduce it.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. So staff has been in discussion with Navidea Bio-Pharmaceuticals regarding the retention and expansion of their Dublin headquarters. For a brief summary, Navidea Bio-Pharmaceuticals has made a lot of headlines recently with their focus on their lymphosick diagnostic agent that they use for those, lymph nodes, tract lymph nodes for those with cancer and soon to Alzheimer's disease. So there, in March of 2013, their pharmaceutical drug was approved by the U.S. FDA and is currently distributed by Cardinal Health in the United States. And recently, they have partnered with a European distributor as well, and they hope to have that distributed in the European Union by the end of the year. The economic development agreement proposed to Navidea includes a five-year 10% performance incentives on withholdings collected for 2014 through 2018. And in consideration, Navidea agrees to retain 40 jobs and create 20 new full-time jobs by the end of 2019. So with that, I'll answer any questions.
Any questions?
What type of jobs are the 20 new jobs?
It's a variety of different functions, so it's going to be everything from back office to also some of their senior management team, so some of the R and D, et cetera. So average wages are in excess of $100,000, so pretty significant positions.
Excellent, thank you.
You're welcome.
Can you tell us where they're presently located?
Yes, they're in metro center currently and are assessing a few other options at this point in terms of their expansion. They're looking for about 25,000 square feet, so they've identified a few options in trying to make a final decision here soon.
How many square feet do they presently occupy?
About 14,000. So it's a significant amount of new space.
Yes, okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, we'll have the second reading on August 12th. Thank you.
Authorizing provision of certain incentives to Persistent Systems, Inc., to induce it to create an office and associated operations and workforce within the city, authorizing execution of an economic development agreement.
I'll introduce it.
Thank you.
Staff has been in discussions with Persistent Systems regarding a job creation project here in central Ohio. The company is based in India with its headquarters in California and plans to open a local office here in the region and resulting in 30 new positions by the end of 2014, I'm sorry, end of 2013, sorry. It has received approval from the state of Ohio from a tax credit authority back in the end of June, just a few, a week ago, and has selected Dublin from the competition of Charlotte and Seattle, Washington. They also are looking at about 5,000 to 7,000 square feet and hope to make that decision within the next 30 to 45 days, but have narrowed it down to a few locations already.
Questions or comments? Can you tell us, did they come to us?
Yeah, so the actual project came through the region, Columbus 2020. They identified Dublin as a potential community they should visit based on their needs and based on our strengths, our business clusters, as we've done in our strategic plan. So our IT strategic cluster that we look at in terms of who are we, our strengths and who are we marketing to. They also noted that the recent IBM announcement solidified to them sort of the investment that a large corporation was making in the IT industry. And they do provide some, some contract work to Cardinal, but we're still looking at a lot of other different places because they do have multiple offices across the country and felt that the Midwest and specifically central Ohio was their best place in terms of what they were looking to do.
So their headquarters is in California?
It is.
How big of a presence do they have there?
You know, I don't remember the actual number of where they have there, but I can look, I can get back to you on the total head count, yeah.
As far as you know, I don't want to be too greedy, but I mean, is there growth potential here?
Yes. Yes, so yes, there absolutely is.
Great, very good. We will have the second reading then on August 12th. Thank you. Thank you. Excuse me, that is the end of our first reading of ordinances and moving on to the other portion of the agenda. And under other this evening, we have approval of rights-of-way, or I'm sorry, approval of rights-of-way plat for Dublin Village Center. And Mr. Goodman is going to present, it appears.
Mr. Fogler alluded to this proposal a few moments ago. As described in the memo provided to council, this particular proposal for new street rights-of-way received extensive discussion by the Planning and Zoning Commission during their review. We do have a presentation prepared to summarize that discussion as well.
Great, thank you.
This is a proposal for a preliminary plat to establish new street rights-of-way for approximately seven acres of land within the existing Dublin Village Center shopping center. This site is zoned within the Bridge Street corridor, Sawmill Center Neighborhood District. At the May 16th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, the commission reviewed a basic plan application for initial phases of redevelopment of the Dublin Village Center. And that proposal included the preliminary concept for a development plan for a portion, the central portion of the DVC site. And that establishes the initial street network and block framework that will lay out the new blocks for development as additional phases of development continue. The basic plan also included the preliminary details of a proposed site plan for the Edwards Apartment Project, which Mr. Fogler also described earlier and is shown on the screen The basic plan lays out new rights-of-way for four new streets within the central portion of the Dublin Village Center. I will note that at this time, staff has not received a full master plan for the full build-out of the Dublin Village Center. This establishes the initial phases of development. Additional development plan and site plan reviews will be required as additional phases proceed in the future. One of the primary items of discussion amongst the Planning and Zoning Commission members during the basic plan review had to do with the establishment of the easternmost leg of John Shields Parkway. This is a district connector street that is intended to connect Sawmill Road from the east, across additional land to the west and eventually connecting to Riverside Drive and then eventually extending across the Scioto River when a new bridge is constructed in the future. And in particular, the commission discussed extensively what the appropriate provision of bicycle facilities should be on this stretch of John Shields Parkway. And to understand this discussion, it's helpful to pull back and provide a little bit more context for the planned bicycle system within this portion of the Bridge Street District. This graphic shows a portion of the Bridge Street District area plan now adopted as part of the community plan. The Dublin Village Center site is outlined in orange. And shown in purple on this graphic are existing multi-use paths within this area and shown in dashed orange lines are conceptual alignments of future bikeways. One of the bicycle facilities proposed for portions of the Bridge Street District is a cycle track system. It's similar to a bike lane, but would be designed at the same level grade as the sidewalk rather than on the street. And outlined in blue here is a loop system that staff has planned for portions of John Shields Parkway, also Village Parkway and extending back to Riverside Drive. The system would also connect Village Parkway to Sawmill Road and eventually extend across the river by connecting to the planned pedestrian bridge and also across a new vehicular bridge as John Shields Parkway is extended to the west in the future. And this graphic is from the original Bridge Street Corridor Vision Report. It shows a concept for how various types of pedestrian and bicycle facilities may be integrated into a more urban street system. In particular, this concept is intended for portions of John Shields Parkway that are intended to primarily have urban residential development contexts along those portions of the street. By contrast, for the Dublin Village Center, the development context is intended to change dramatically to the east. These are two graphics also from the Bridge Street District area plan, and you'll recognize the top graphic from the original Bridge Street Corridor Vision Report illustrating a very high-density, very mixed-use, highly walkable environment with a great deal of emphasis on pedestrian mobility, certainly also on bicycle mobility and vehicle mobility as well. But the intent here is that this is primarily a shopping, dining, entertainment type of district. There will be, of course, residential uses in this area as well as a true mixed-use environment. But the intent here, as staff has gone through the planning process for the Sawmill Center Neighborhood, was it was expected that cyclists would tend to ride within the roadway on these more urban streets. Certainly cyclists traveling to the Dublin Village Center may also choose to park their bicycle at a public bicycle rack and proceed to their destination on foot. And in keeping with that design intent, staff worked with the applicant to develop a proposed street section for John Shields Parkway within the Dublin Village Center, as shown here. And this was what was reviewed by the Planning Commission with the basic plan review. This includes two standard 11-foot travel lanes, eight-foot parallel parking lanes, a narrow carriage walk that allows pedestrians to step out of their car before reaching the tree lawn, and then a sidewalk system behind the tree lawn. This includes approximately 10-foot wide sidewalks in keeping with the more pedestrian, retail-oriented nature of the development intended for this area. However, at the basic plan review, the Planning and Zoning Commission expressed concern with this particular approach and felt that some specific provision of bicycle facilities should be accommodated on John Shields Parkway within this area. And the commission drafted a condition of approval stating that the applicant provide a designated bicycle way and enhanced pedestrian pathways on John Shields Parkway. Staff proceeded to work with the applicant following the basic plan review to develop an appropriate solution that met the intent of the Planning Commission's condition. One of the options that was considered was extending the typical John Shields Parkway section with the cycle track system as depicted here. This would be one-way cycle travel at the same grade as the sidewalk on either side of the street. And staff discussed this with the applicant as an option to extend through the Dublin Village Center. However, the applicant expressed concern with this particular approach, primarily given the high volume of pedestrians that are intended in this area and likely high turnover of on-street parking. The applicant was concerned that there would be considerable conflict between pedestrians and cyclists at the same level of the sidewalk and ultimately was not in favor of this approach. The applicant developed an alternative solution, sort of a hybrid, that would instead provide a shared two-way bicycle path that would also be used by pedestrians on one side of the street. This would be an eight-foot path. And staff found that, felt that this appropriately met the intent of the Planning Commission's condition and recommended approval when submitted with the preliminary plat on June 20th. However, upon further consideration, the applicant determined that they were still concerned with potential for pedestrian and bicycle conflicts with this proposal as well and developed an alternative solution as depicted here. This removed the sidewalk-level bicycle way and instead widened the vehicular travel lanes from 11 feet to 14 feet and provides a shero marking in the outside edge of the travel lane. This is the same marking used on portions of Emerald Parkway today, which of course is a different development context and traffic context. Staff is not in favor of this particular approach within the Dublin Village Center for a number of reasons as described in your memo. The intent of streets within the Bridge Street District, particularly in these very dense urban environments, is to minimize pavement width. That will help to moderate travel speeds of traffic through the area. And staff is concerned that any additional pavement width will only serve to increase travel speeds, which is counterproductive to providing a space for cyclists on the roadway. That widening the pavement width will also increase pedestrian crossing distances at crosswalks at the street intersections. And also, this particular approach by providing the shero at the outside edge of the travel lane, between the travel lane and parallel parking, will place the shero essentially within the door swing zone of the parallel parking and encourage cyclists to ride in a more dangerous portion of the roadway. The Planning Commission agreed that this was not an appropriate solution to meet the intent of their original condition from the basic plan review. They also felt that the alternative solution of the eight-foot shared pedestrian bicycle path also did not meet the intent of their condition, and they drafted a new condition during the preliminary plat review. And that condition was that the applicant continue to work with staff to design the proposed bicycle facility for John Shields Parkway as a space separately designated to avoid conflicts with pedestrians and vehicles and that the street section be modified prior to submission to city council. Staff proceeded to work with the applicant following the Planning Commission's review of the preliminary plat to find an appropriate solution. One of the options proposed by the applicant was to provide a striped and dedicated bicycle lane on the roadway. That actually would have further widened the pavement width of the vehicular travel lanes. And for the reasons I just went over, staff is opposed to that solution for this area as well, although bike lanes certainly are likely to be appropriate for other roadways in Dublin. We don't feel it's an appropriate solution for this type of urban environment. Ultimately, staff and the applicant came to the recognition that it may not be possible to meet the objectives of all parties involved. And staff worked with the applicant to develop the proposed section shown on the slide here and is submitted to council as part of the preliminary plat. This solution returns to standard 11-foot travel lanes. It does provide a shero within the roadway, but instead of at the outside edge of the roadway, the shero is provided within the center of the roadway. The idea here is that these are full, shared vehicular bicycle lanes, which is becoming a more common solution for certain types of urban streets. The intent is that these are low-speed streets and that cyclists should be able to ride safely within the street, as long as the cyclist knows where it's appropriate for them to ride and that motorists know where it's appropriate as well. This solution would also include regulatory signs that specify that bicycles may use the full lane, which is permitted by law, so that motorists will respect the right of cyclists cyclists to be in this portion of the roadway. This solution also meets another of the Planning Commission's conditions, which was to provide minimum eight-foot sidewalks on John Shields Parkway. And this this option actually provides 10-foot wide sidewalks within the public right-of-way, which again is similar to the original proposal with the basic plan. And staff and the applicant both feel that this is appropriate for the design intent for this urban street. The section I just reviewed is included in the proposed preliminary plat has been submitted to city council. And that plat provides right-of-way for, as I noted earlier, four new streets: Trinity Street to the west of the proposed Edwards Apartment Project, Tridalla Road to the east, Tollgate Avenue south of the new Edwards Apartment Project, and south of the AMC Theater. Of course, John Shields Parkway running through the center of the site. And some additional right-of-way for Dublin Center Drive, reconfiguring that to a T-intersection with the new John Shields Parkway. Of the five conditions of approval that the Planning Commission added in recommending to city council, four of those have been met with this proposal. It is condition five that remains outstanding, dealing with the provision of a separately-designated bicycle space. As I noted earlier, staff feels that that particular condition cannot be met while achieving the objectives of the applicant in a way that is acceptable to both planning and engineering staffs. And staff recommends approval of the proposed street section and submitted to council and recommends approval of the preliminary plat with two conditions. One of these, condition one, is a carryover from the Planning Commission's review. This is a technical condition dealing with the design of the street intersections as depicted on the plat. And condition two states that the proposed street section for John Shields Parkway, including 11-foot wide shared vehicular bicycle lanes, two-and-a-half-foot wide carriage walks, six-foot wide tree lawns, and 10-foot wide sidewalks, be approved with this preliminary plat. I'd be happy to answer any questions that council may have. I know the applicant's available this evening as well.
Questions?
I have a couple.
John?
You know, I don't think I'm that happy with the the solution, the sherods. I actually am wondering, when you look at the very first solution that was originally recommended, and I can understand that the six-foot walks might be a little bit tight, but the bike-only lanes at eight foot and they're one-way lanes from what I understand.
That's the design intent, yes.
Can't we take two feet off of those since they're one-way lanes and add those two feet onto the pedestrian walkways that are butting the building so you do move comfortably up and down the street shopping? Nothing's worse than bumping into people when you're out in one of these urban centers. And I can't see why, you know, the bike-only lanes are eight feet wide, or I guess they aren't.
Five feet plus a carriage walk.
Plus the carriage, yeah.
And that that accommodates for the door swing zone.
So I'm just wondering, can't we shrink that down by two feet, make those three feet then in total?
That's certainly an option. That would be generally consistent with the overall cycle track system planned for other portions of John Shields Parkway. Ultimately, the applicant is not in favor and will not agree to providing a bicycle way at the same grade as the sidewalk system.
Well, I mean, this is the the intent and the direction of our that our city's going to create this kind of environment. And I think we're really defeating that by making the changes that are requested by the developer. If you add that up, you've got a six-foot possibility with a door swing on it, taking up, let's say, three feet or two-and-a-half feet, and you'd still have room for the bicyclist. So I would think that might be a better solution. And I really agree with the developer that you want as much sidewalk space as you can get in the pedestrian zone up against the building. So that's the only way I can see how you can still have your 76 feet and achieve a reasonable solution to the problem.
I guess, can you put up the graphic that shows the the loop of this proposed cycle And where are we?
So the blue lines are showing the preliminary alignment of the cycle track system. And so this is John Shields Parkway as shown on the Bird Street District area plan extending from realigned Riverside Drive to the east, connecting with Village Parkway and then proceeding into the Dublin Village Center development. So staff's planning for the cycle track system was to intersect Village Parkway and then use Village Parkway as a primary means to access Sawmill Road to the east. And hopefully, there will be new bicycle facilities within the city of Columbus in the future and also to loop back along a new street system to Riverside Drive and also planning for a two-way cycle track on the east portion of Riverside Drive.
Right. Where on this map are we looking at for this proposal?
So we are looking generally John Shields Parkway.
That stretch of John Shields.
Here. The Edwards Apartment Project would be located here. The AMC Theater is located here.
Okay. I wonder if I might play devil's advocate with those who want to have the bicycle traffic in with the vehicular traffic solely. If you have a cyclist, and we talked about this during the Bird Street Corridor, that you have cyclists who are very comfortable with riding in streets, and then you have other cyclists who are not quite as experienced or very uncomfortable riding in with streets, regardless of how many signs and how slow traffic, you know, you're still going to have individuals that are not going to be comfortable being in that in that right-of-way. So assuming that they want to stay on their bicycles, where might they go if they don't want to be in in that vehicular traffic? Might they go to the sidewalk? Might they go to that carriage way? You know, I'm just thinking that if we don't have a designated spot for them or somehow discourage, you know, bicycling except on that street, and then I'm not sure what kind of an environment. And I guess I also have an issue that that, in my view, doesn't meet what the Planning Commission has asked for. And that's, I guess, my biggest concern is we don't have a separate facility. We have a combined facility. And while in principle it works, you know, I'm a cyclist myself and I really try to avoid streets if I can. That's why I love Dublin, we have so many bikeways, or shared-use path, I should say. And I'm just concerned you're going to have cyclists out where they're where we don't necessarily want them if we don't give a facility.
Well, and to tag along with your thoughts, like families or something like that, I don't think they're going to go in the middle of the road either, Amy, and then that means they'll go on the sidewalk anyway.
Yeah, that's my question. Where might they go?
That certainly may happen from time to time. There will always be certain bicyclists who aren't comfortable riding in a roadway regardless of the system that's provided, even if it's a dedicated bicycle lane. Some people, certainly families, young children, will not be comfortable using that type of facility. From time to time, we may actually see people choose to use a wider sidewalk. But again, the wider sidewalk would accommodate that hopefully without making it a designated space that encourages that conflict between pedestrians and cyclists, but they would be accommodated if they chose to do so. We also expect that if somebody doesn't live within the Dublin Village Center and they're cycling to a destination within that area, once they reach the Dublin Village Center, there's essentially a three-to-four block span, which is a very walkable distance once you're inside it. We expect to have bicycle parking facilities throughout the area. So we would expect in a highly urban environment, people may choose to park their bicycle and then proceed on foot the final block or two.
Is the overall dimension of that about 300 feet?
I'm sorry, which?
The overall dimension is at 300 feet for the Dublin?
From one side of?
Yeah. I'm just, you know, getting back to what Amy was saying, if they're not that comfortable.
It's more than 300 feet. It's, I don't have the exact number. It's, it's, I would venture, I guess it's less than a quarter of a mile, which is a walkable, a walkable distance within five or so minutes.
I mean, you've got an interesting bicycle path system laid out, and then all of a sudden it sort of stops or it converts over to the road.
Correct.
System. And most of these young people that are going to rent these units, hopefully, or maybe the old people, who knows, you know, they're going to push their bicycles up to their unit, take them up their stairs, chain them off. This whole thing, this is a little uncomfortable the way it's laid out.
Yeah.
You know, that's one of the issues I have with it. And the other thing is we're trying to promote people taking their bicycles to work and the importance of bicycles. And a sherrod painted in the street probably, in the new planning that we're seeking, is probably not the best solution for that objective.
You know, John, I agree with your comments, and I think they, I think they satisfy the concerns that the developer might be talking about. But equally important is that I think that would go a long way to satisfying the conditions as set forth by the Planning and Zoning Commission. And it sounds like that the Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed this. I read through their minutes, and I'm almost hearing you say that, well, even though the applicant, legal representative, Mr. Hale, agreed to these conditions, I, it's almost like I'm hearing that staff and the developer say, well, we don't want to agree to this. And, but I think that John has a, has a workable solution to that.
Perhaps I can clarify. The commission made it clear that they did not want to design a specific facility or dictate exactly what the facility should be during the meeting. They did ask staff to to meet the objective of providing a separate space, and you're correct. This solution as proposed here does not meet the letter of that condition, although they did not make clear if their preference was an on-street facility or an off-street facility.
Yeah, I mean, I think the sherods, I don't think that's going to work in this area, personally. I'm not in favor of that whatsoever. I think something what John's coming up with would be a very workable alternative.
Mike?
I was just curious, how would you compare this to the Eastern project that's there now? What do they do with the, or do they do anything?
I'm not familiar with any specific designated bicycle facilities within Eastern. There are, they are narrow lanes. I have seen people cycling within those streets. They're very low-speed streets, and it, from my understanding, it tends not to create too many conflicts.
There's a lot of mix. I mean, there's a lot of apartments, there's retail, there's a little bit of everything over there. But they, that was not addressed in that project.
No.
Yeah, you know, you know, Mike, and it's pretty obvious, too, when you walk the streets, you know, that component is really missing there. I've always thought that when I walked around.
I've never actually seen anybody on a bicycle there at all because it's not conducive to that. And the apartments are really not right in the center themselves. They're, you know, external on the other side of the street. So I don't think you, it's not, conceptually, it's not the same thing. The intent, if I'm understanding and reading, the intent of planning and zoning, if you had the one recommendation, or not recommendation, but the one idea with the 14-size road, so you have a separation, you have the bicycle right on the road, but designated accordingly, then that does separate it and meets their intent. I mean, yes, I think they purposely, it seems to me that they purposely said it the way they did, knowing that that might be an alternative as opposed to a separate above, you know.
The, when the commission reviewed the proposed 14-foot lane with the sherrod as drawn, they did not feel that that met their original condition. It was not, that's why they created the separate, the new condition, they use the word separate or separately designated.
Of course, that is separately designated. I mean, that's, I mean, I think the reason I'm opposed to that isn't really because of that separation, but is going to the 14-foot, because we are trying to slow traffic, be more pedestrian-friendly, and one of the first ways you do that is narrow the street so that people naturally would slow down. And then you have the parallel parking, so it brings you more, again, speed-wise. You begin to realize that you're in a different environment that you, that might have driven in from.
I'm not in favor of this at all because I think it creates more conflict because, as Amy pointed out, people will go on the sidewalk where the pedestrians are. The drivers will be extremely frustrated. And from the beginning, I think when we were on this bicycle thing, we wanted people to bicycle, I think we emphasized that while we're building new roads, let's not mess it up. Let's create something separate, you know, instead of squeezing it in like we have at Emerald Parkway. You have several good ideas here of, you know, one-way or two-way that doesn't take much room. I remember walking across the Brooklyn Bridge, and they had a line here, not that anybody paid attention to it, but the bicyclists knew and the people got out of their way. I can't see it on the street whatsoever. And I think that P&amp;Z debated this, talked about this, and they wanted something totally separate, not something that fits in on the street.
Can I ask a question? Excuse me, just real quick about design, because I hear you saying is that the developer is opposed to something that's at the grade of the sidewalk.
Correct.
What if you drop that bicycle lane down to the grade so you in fact had a cur, had curbing so that pedestrians would understand when they're getting out of their cars, you have that carriage lane, and then you have a lane for by the cycle track, if you will, that is at a slightly different grade so that that would be designated and people would realize, you know, there's traffic here, it's not, you know, vehicular or it's bicycle traffic rather than car traffic. And that would seem to alert people because that just looks like more sidewalk.
That was an option that was discussed briefly at the Planning and Zoning Commission as well, and that solution has been implemented in some cities. Often, it's at a, as a retrofit condition by moving an existing parking lane out if there's space in the roadway to do that. It's certainly an option. I'd allow, ask the applicant maybe to address their their view of that. I believe their concerns were twofold. One, that the sidewalk and the cycle track were at the same level, but also that the cycle track or the cycle movement be located between the face of the building and the parallel parking zone. That's one issue that maybe could get worked out. Another consideration, though, is the complications that that would create at street intersections. All of these streets are intended to be designed with a bump out that narrows the crossing distance even further for pedestrians. So significant rework would need to be done to the design to accommodate a cycle track at the street level that would go through that raised bump out. But there are certainly various ways to design those solutions.
I wonder if I might express?
I'm finished, yes, thank you.
If I might express what appears to be a minority view. What I see proposed in our packet is acceptable to me based upon what I think that we're trying to achieve here. We're trying to achieve an urban environment and, and, you know, with suburbanized streets, you know, perhaps. I mean, I wouldn't be in favor of widening these streets, but, you know, first of all, you know, we're trying to create this low-speed environment in which I think that these cyclists should be as safe as they are in other low-speed environments. I mean, I think short north, and quite frankly, there are areas of the short north that I wouldn't describe as low-speed environments as I envision this. And I also think that there's the opportunity for those people that aren't as comfortable riding with the vehicular traffic to use these 10-foot-wide sidewalks. I, what I'm envisioning is this ability to reach this particularly dense area that's designed to be walkable. It'll frankly, I believe, be a destination of sorts and that people can use these other means with with dedicated opportunities to ride their bicycles there. And then when they reach this area, my expectation is that the vast majority of people would be walking. You know, there still will be opportunities to go through eastbound and cross Sawmill So I, I guess this is, this is what I, I would prefer and what I think is in keeping with the concept, as I understand it anyway, for this particular area and, you know, beyond. So, anyway.
My problem is, we've got to do it right the first time because there's not going to be any more room. And if we've got it all the way around the blue part, why would you all of a sudden make it different? Why don't you keep it continuous? The difference between us and, in like the short north or whatever, we have room now to implement it. We don't have to retrofit it. And I'm still a little confused about the conflict of the cyclists and the pedestrians because they'll be going, I think the cyclists will be going like this and, you know, jumping back and forth, and we have a designated lane, then it's not going to be, you know, the conflict. I really see it, when people say, well, let the cyclists and the walkers share the area and if you think it's going to be busy... and if you think it's going to be busy," I think that's a real conflict on that part. And I don't, I don't understand why we don't continue the design so it looks continuous and homogeneous type of design and not do it wrong.
Can you clarify what you were going to do in the blue? Because I do think that we want to be consistent in the behavior of people in this area because we're changing the pattern of behavior, at least for people that have traditionally ridden bikes in Dublin. So what were you planning in the blue area?
So for, on the previous slide, the area is shown in blue. This is the street section that would represent the implementation of cycle tracks, one-way cycle tracks on either side of the roadway along those roadways. You're correct. Once that section ends and intersects with another street section, there will need to be a transition at the intersection into an on-road shared-lane facility as proposed or any other type, different type of facility. There would have to be a transition designed at that street intersection. Those are details that we have yet to work through, but I believe that engineering is confident that those can be dealt with. Certainly, there will always be transitions at certain intersections because there will never be one size-fits-all facilities that will be appropriate for every roadway.
But why, why do you have to do that? You know, to pick up on Kathy's question.
Well, you certainly don't have to. The design intent initially, and this was staff's design thinking for this area as well, is that the development character changes so much to the east of Village Parkway within the planned redevelopment of Dublin Village Center that it's appropriate to change the bicycle facility as well. However, that's not to say that a cycle track or some other type of facility could not be incorporated as simply as consistent with the original design intent.
You know, this slide that you have up here has four good points to it that, and I would like to see, and I thank you, Richard, for the support on maybe moving two feet out. Because nothing's worse than, in a shop, I mean, how many times have you, for two humans to walk comfortably abreast to go anywhere, up your driveway to dinner, up your sidewalk, you need four feet. So you're really shooting for eight feet. Nothing's worse than going to a shopping area and dodging around people as you're walking down the sidewalk. So the developers are right on that point, I believe. But there's four things that are important about this project. One, you need a good transition from your bike road that goes into this Dublin Village Center, okay? And this provides that transition. Two, you have a really large elevated area in case it's congested, okay? Because you have the grass space under the trees if you have to walk around something, or six kids are running down the street. So you still have that zone, you know, to move to the left or the right off the hard surface. Three, there's the area for the shoppers to pass comfortably. And four, you provide a safe zone for the bikers, and you let people know that there is a bike zone. And I think after that, and the reason I like it elevated is because once you step off the curb, you're in a higher-speed traffic zone with the high risk of cars. So I think this thing, slightly modified, might be a good solution and get us where we got to go, make everybody happy.
One point I'll make on the width of the sidewalk in this section, certainly is expected that in many locations, there may be additional sidewalk area that happens on private plots between the building face and the public right-of-way. So although this is showing a six-foot sidewalk within the right-of-way, there would typically be additional streetscape area as well.
Yeah, and you know, in a push got to shove, under the trees, you could use cobbles to extend the hard surface. If you found out that the grass is wearing, and there's so many people up and down this area, and they're not staying on the now eight feet of concrete, you could transition off the grass, still keep the trees in or pave it in, and still have hard surface, and still get the bike problem solved, and also meet the requirements of the planning department. And I think it could end up with a really good project.
Can you show me again the map? Isn't John Shields the, one of the major east-west connectors?
Yes, correct.
And you're, I'm not understanding this. You're proposing to change it in the middle of it?
Well, not in the middle. It depends on which way you're coming from, at the end or the beginning. It would have a much different development context than is expected to the west of Village Parkway.
But where are you changing?
A change in character would happen at the intersection of John Shields Parkway and Village Parkway.
Okay, then come down to the other, the blues. Now that's going to continue on over, right? Okay.
So I guess one of the things that occurs to me, again, and this is how I envision the concept, is, you know, when we look at the section that's outlined in the orange, and, you know, maybe it's not a bad thing, but, you know, if we do what the Planning and Zoning Commission has proposed and what I hear the majority of council supporting, I guess I always hope that when people visited this area, that it would be, they would be somewhat pleasantly surprised, that it would be distinctly not Dublin. And it just strikes me as we're suburbanizing this. And that's my concern. You know, bicycles aren't prohibited. You know, they can share the roadway with vehicles. And we don't expect a lot of high-speed traffic here. They can use these 10-foot sidewalks. And again, I would expect the bicycle traffic to be considerably less within this area. You know, it's just, I mean, as cyclists, honestly, you know, you learn, you know, what is the smoothest, safest route between points A and B if that's what your purpose is? You know, the bicyclist who wants to go, you know, from east to west or north to south, is not going to ride through here, you know, because this is going to be the more densely developed area. Presumably, you know, many more people, you know, pedestrian traffic and so forth, not going to want to ride your bike through here. I mean, I can't, I mean, for what purpose? Window shopping? I mean, on your bike? I mean, you don't park your bike and get off and walk.
I don't know that I agree with you on that only because of the way John Shields is going to be the east-west connector. So you're going to come from the Parkett Riverside Drive and go, you know, go east. Or you're coming east going west. So it, you know, it is the area that just people not even living in there would presumably be able to use to go back and forth east and west. So I think it's not exactly, I normally would say I totally agree with that, but I think that we're thinking of it in terms of people using it that live in here. And I don't think it's exclusive to that group at all.
But Merrily, excuse me, so presumably, you know, we're talking about our residents for the most part. So, you know, where's their destination beyond this urbanized district?
Going to the stores and restaurants that are on the east side of Sawmill Road.
Yeah, okay.
I'll clarify, there is not a full-access intersection at the proposed John Shields Parkway intersection with Sawmill Road.
Yeah, but that's been talked about by the staff rofts and everything, so it will happen at some point.
That would be Sawmill Road, actually, it would be one block south.
So the John Shields Parkway between the orange lines is what this is proposing to modify?
Correct.
So all of a sudden, you're driving along, and all of a sudden, it's going to change? You know, that doesn't make sense. That just doesn't make sense for people who want to get from point A to point B and going straight through. It just creates a, and then as soon as we do it there, then we're going to, it's not going to be right. And all of a sudden, other places are going to say, "Well, they didn't have to do it, we don't have to do it." And this is our major, one of our major east-west connectors. Doesn't make sense to me.
I wonder if we could have the applicant offer their point of view?
You know, Tim, as I look at this, what's frustrating to me, the tunnels that we put in some time ago, people walk over top the road, and I see these great bicycle lanes and everything. But the bicyclist enthusiast is going to be out in that roadway. I just don't see them using it. That's just me, but...
I guess we're not talking about enthusiasts. I guess we're talking about being a bicycle-friendly town and encouraging people not to get in their cars, ordinary people, and not the cyclists. I don't think the cyclists are going to be going through a busy piece of congested area anyway, the serious ones. They're still going to go out on Dublin Road and cause havoc there.
You know, Kathy, I agree with you because people coming out of these units, living here, are going to get on their bike, and they're going to go anywhere, God knows where, across the river here and there on their bikes. I can't see them, and this is why I disagree with you, Tim, I can't see them stopping and walking their bikes 70 yards to their units and climbing them up the stairs. They're going to take their bikes down, get on their bikes and take off. And we will become a more interesting city when that takes hold and people start utilizing these things, if we build them, you know. It's the old, "If we build them, they will come." And if we do it correctly, and this is our first shot out to do this right. And I think the planning is here to do it right and to do something extraordinary. And I like the whole elevation, one elevation of one plane until you get to the curb. And it's a very large elevation of 19 feet when you take it in total on both sides. And there's plenty of adjustments could be made in the future with that, so...
Would the applicant come forward, please? Give us your name and address, we'd like to please.
Carrie Reed with MKSK 462 South Lough Alley. Couple of things, I agree with you, Mr. Mayor, that in terms of...
You might. No, thank you.
And in the sense that...
My point of view doesn't have a prayer, but go ahead.
As a shop owner, I don't want you on a bicycle on the street. I don't want you on a bicycle on the sidewalk. I don't want your car on an adjacent street. I want you on the sidewalk, preferably in my store. So the whole intent of this being a successful urban environment is to have as many people walking on the sidewalks and in and out of the stores as possible. I think that putting, as one of the illustrations indicated, putting bicycles on a sidewalk is simply trading one potential conflict for another. I think that people's expectation as a motorist, especially as you indicated, in a low-speed, active, dense environment such as this, is that there might be bicycles on the street. I think when you get out of your car, when you're parallel parked, the expectation is not that you're going to have to dodge your bicycle going by that you step out onto a sidewalk and it's for walking. I, for example, cannot imagine, the nature of Easton came up, that I can't imagine a bicycle in any instance riding on a sidewalk there. It's clearly for people, as I think it should be. The other thing is, is that the concern about the nature of John Shields changing, I think it's actually appropriate that it does change because this is a completely different environment of the area immediately east. And the intent is, is that there's existing facilities and planned additional facilities that get you there. As was alluded to, we provided, as part of the initial phase of this project, a multitude of bicycle parking at basically every intersection so that once you're in the development, you're encouraged to park your bike either within a public right-of-way or immediately adjacent. So it's not hidden around a corner behind a dense shrub, but it's right there next to the, right off the, right off the street to, again, encourage you to become pedestrian and patronize the shops and the movie theater that's there.
Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I just have to say I don't agree with what you're saying, and here's why, okay? I respect you as your landscape architecture firm and planning firm. But you do have a huge transition of an alley of trees separating you from the pedestrian zone, okay? And I think, you know, we're making every effort to encourage our citizens to use bicycles to go to work and to shop. And you've got a 19-foot platform up there, a surface, and I think it's, that's huge. And I also take issue with people coming out of a car and the bicyclist seeing that happen, not being aware of that, so... I mean, I know we have different viewpoints in this, and that's fine, but...
Well, I think the one thing that that doesn't address, perhaps, if you were to, if you were to put it up there, is what I consider to be a considerable conflict in an intersection where you're now, you're taking bicycles and you're forcing them into the same space. And you've got someone riding, you've got people with strollers. And again, I think that the cyclist at that juncture is honestly better off in the street. And I think the pedestrians are better off not conflicting or competing with a bicycle at crosswalks. The other thing that I think it does is to consider the urban envelope that we're trying to create here. By putting dedicated bike lanes here, you're effectively spreading the buildings apart. You're making a road basically effectively over a lane wider. And I think it really begins to change the character of the place. And I'm not sure that, and everyone's really considered what it's going to appear like. Imagine at Easton, if you, you know, it wouldn't appear so, but if you effectively had a suicide, now that's effectively what you're doing, is you're adding another 12 to 15 feet of asphalt and spreading everything further apart. And I think that every time you do that, it makes it inherently less pedestrian. I mean, the pedestrian environment should be tight, should be exciting, it should be, you know, somewhat congested. I think that's what makes it vibrant.
But you've got 13 feet of space, and, you know, I just, Easton, the sidewalks are way too small. They're way too small for pedestrians. They don't even work. Thing was laid out horribly, I might say. So if you're walking down there and there's anybody coming at you, there's not enough sidewalk space.
We're only talking about one large east-west connector, right? We're not talking about the whole area.
So...
So I'm still confused.
May I say one? Kevin McCollie, St. Edward's Interests, 565 Metro Place South. To your point, John, I think we've gone out and studied several urban developments, trying to get it right, figure out what that is. And I think we've walked a lot of sidewalks, just like we're saying. And there's normally three of us that are always together, and it's very tight to walk three by three anywhere. So one thing that we've been very specific about in even working with Carrie when we're laying out this plan is to say, if we're looking at our point, we want to be sure that we have 15 feet between wherever that site, wherever that green space, wherever that tree lawn is in the first building. So what we're showing up here, if you look at this plan and you say, "Okay, now I've added an eight-foot section for the bike paths," and that's only showing eight or nine or 10 feet. You're going to add even another five to six feet. Some places, we're going to go 20 feet on each section. So what Carrie's saying is, we're spreading this way, way out if we are going to try to accommodate some type of bike path in that. So you have to think of every street, not, that's just the right-of-way. Add another 10 feet on there of hardscape between the right-of-way, where it ends in a building face. So you're just keep pushing this and pushing this and pushing this. So that's where we have the same thing. We know we need wider sidewalks. But if you also try to put a bike path between the cars and the sidewalks, you're getting so wide. You're going to tear apart what I think is the fabric of an urban development.
That might be one problem with this type of form code that we have because we're not really seeing the entire design layout. We're just seeing streets. I mean, we're sort of looking, we're kind of working in a vacuum to some extent, you know? Which is kind of unfortunate.
I think 12 different designs for this, trying to meet P&amp;Z.
We don't have those except pretty pictures.
Right, we, because we're, you know, it's the code, as you said, it's the difficulty with the code is, we're having to dedicate right-of-way before we have all the other sections to show you. The only section we can bring in front of you is to show you is the Edwards piece. And you can see in front of that, they did push from that right-of-way. There, five to 10 feet in variation back from that. So you have a huge distance. And if we're going to add, because this doesn't have that eight feet of bicycle tracking, add that on each side, you just keep pushing and widening, widening, widening. But it is an issue that P&amp;Z had problems with the code because of how we are and where we are, how we got here. And it's, you know, we're all trying to, it's the process that's here.
Yeah, and that's why I really think you ought to, I think you ought to shrink the eight-foot bicycle track down to six.
It's not necessarily that, it's what, the intent of, which one's worse? Which, how do you want to look at have the least conflict? We're going to have over a million visitors a year just at the AMC, so 2 million visitors walking around out here. That's what you're going to, you know, 3 million, I don't, we don't know the number. How many bicycles are we going to have? And so then if we're going to design it all around a bicycle on a sidewalk with all those people walking, that's where we have to find out, what's the least impact? Then we've got to look at, as Carrie suggested, intersections. So you put a bicycle inside the driveline, and you want to cross an intersection, second conflict. We're not, we can't reteach everybody how to drive. Your sightline, when you take a turn, you're going to sit, you're going to look here. You don't look at that extra distance. It's outside of your radius to turn. You're going, there's studies out there, you can go out and read them very quickly. These kind of cycle tracks are made for high-speed, no crossings. We've got five crossings, stopwalks, there are crossings at a minimum between this 1,200-foot section. So you're going to add all that into place and have these bicycles, what, stop every 300 feet? Not even that, every 200 feet, and they're going to stop at a crosswalk and go? They're going to choose, they're going to choose the least resistance. That's the path around that they've done a great job saying, "Here's a cycle track designated just for bikes, and you can go as quick as you want." You're not going to have everybody hopping out of their cars, kids on, on stroll, in strollers, people going back and forth between shops with their bags, on their cellphones, talking, texting, all that. That's where you're going to have conflicts. So we're getting them out of that. So can you meet everyone and make everybody happy? Not at all, you can't, there's no way, and that's why P&amp;Z, we had such trouble, we went back, and we went back, and we went back, and even if you read those minutes, you can see that Ms. Grooms, I think, did a great job saying, at the end of the day, if it's safest, if it's determined, and it was by, I believe, at that time, it was certainly by Fire Marshal, they liked it in the street because it gave them that, and certainly by police, the less activity you can have on that sidewalk with bikes was the best. She said it very eloquently by saying, if that's the best place to have it in the street, put it in the street. If you go through the minutes, that was her final comment, and that's where we came back with and said, we think we've met it, the best that we can, by saying, it's got to go on the street.
You know, I read the comments, and what I saw was that they wanted a separate bicycle.
And we, we, we proposed that.
It wasn't in the street.
There is a separate one we can propose.
Was not in the street, so that's, that's not a correct statement. They wanted a separate bicycle.
Yeah, I'm looking at the minutes right here.
And I got them circled here, every, every comment.
And does it not say, though, she said, at the end of the time, if it has to go in the street, it has to go in the street?
But it doesn't have to go the street. Another thing is, you want to slow down a bicycler, don't give him an eight-foot lane, give him a six-foot lane, all right? I mean, come on. When you, when you drive on a narrow street, you slow your car down.
Right.
Okay?
Yes.
It's inert in, in humanity, so you, you know, I think the solution is, is what I suggested earlier.
Right. I think, unfortunately, we've gone round and round with this, and I, I, I respect that opinion. It's one that we can't go forward with, it's one that we've reached out to different people and found out, retailers, everybody out there is telling us, you put the bicycles between the cars and the, and the buildings, and it's not going to work. So we can't, as the developer, move forward with that option. If that is ultimately what you guys mandate us to do, we can't go forward with that option. So we've, we've, we've tried, I'm talking months with staff, and trying to figure this bike path system out, and I think we're, we, and I'll speak for Edwards on his project, have reached this limit, and we're trying to find out a solution that says, how can we get people through this and pedestrian-friendly? That's what this piece of the Bridge Street quarter was made of, high urban density, not bicycles zooming through it. So I don't know that there's a solution for us, other than what we're proposing today, is what we will ask you to take action on, and that's...
Yeah, but you know, again, I think you, you know, what you're saying, you don't have pedestrians and bicycles mixing, you've got an entire alley of trees separating the two. And if you really wanted to, you could have an alley of trees and shrubs separating the two, okay? And it could be a very nice aesthetic improvement. So, yeah, the least expensive thing to do is paint some sherods on the street and do that, and bring the bicyclers into that kind of car-bicycle conflict, which I always think's a heck of a lot more dangerous than keeping them on their separate track. And I've been to Portland, and I've been around, I've looked at plenty of these places, and, you know, they're done this way.
Yes.
And I'm sorry to hear that, you know, this is a stumbling point for you.
Yes.
I wanted to ask a question of Justin, if I may.
Go ahead.
Um, Justin, I hear that you are supportive of the applicant's position now. I'm curious about sort of the evolution of staff, because I thought I heard you say at the beginning of the presentation that you originally wanted these separate facilities, and I'm kind of curious about the evolution of staff's point of view about this particular neighborhood.
Actually, staff's position at the beginning of this process was that the street system similar to, to this was acceptable and consistent with the design intent for Dublin Village Center.
With no cycle track.
This would, this would actually not include the cycle track or any separate provision for a bicycle facility. The, the thinking was that cyclists in this very dense urban environment would tend to use the roadway or walk.
So it was never envisioned that this particular part of the neighborhood, if you will, would have cycle tracks or separate cyclist facilities?
There was an earlier concept proposed by Nelson Nygard, a transportation consultant, that did propose the, the general bikeway system. One option would have brought it either around Toller Road to the north of this site or potentially through, but that was never really finalized amongst staff, so there were a number of, of options considered, and as the, the planning process proceeded, staff ultimately arrived at, at this solution, that there was the cycle track would diverge at Village Parkway, and because of the development, the change in development character within Dublin Village Center, for some time now, we have assumed that, that the street section would be different here.
I, I'm not, I'm not sure I should ask this question, but I can't help myself, apparently. You'll, you'll tell me whether I went astray. You know, as we go east, and, and I really don't mean this as an insult, but as, as we, as people were to go east, theoretically cross Sawmill Road, to what? I mean, to what? You going to ride your bike over there?
Well, there's a shopping center there.
I, I know what's over there, but, but, you know, the, the people that we're trying to attract, you know, by this Bridge Street District and so forth, I mean, I, I appreciate that theoretically, I suppose, you know, one day that could redevelop, you know, I don't know, 20, 30 years from now, you know, but to the extent that, that, you know, we're talking about this as, as a thoroughfare, you know, I'm wondering, you know, the people that, that were creating this environment to invite here, where, where are we going? East, we're, we're to HH Gregg? You know, I'm sorry, I, you know...
You're probably going to go to the two major shopping centers over there, Whole Foods and a whole host of other places that are on the other side of the road.
Well, eventually, you know, it will evolve. Justin, the plan that I see here, mark June 24, 2013, with the charles in the middle of the road. Do you still have, you still have 19 feet?
There's additional sidewalk area in that, in that section.
You got a three-foot carriage, six-foot tree lawn, and a 10-foot concrete walk.
Correct.
So the other, so I'm hearing from the developer, we can't do that with, because, John, didn't you mention?
Well, what I don't understand, if the, if the setback is that great, we're going to have some huge sidewalks then.
Yeah, because...
Potentially giant ones. So it's, any of the, the developers saying, well, you know, this is going to be unattractive. Hell, yes, it's going to be unattractive, and the solution's a lot better, so, yeah, because if that's true and the setbacks are that great, you're going to have enormous sidewalks.
Because on the one with the bike, dedicated bike thing, that's 19 feet, and the one with their bikes in the road is still 19 feet, and John's right, you're going to have this huge sidewalk that bikes are going to use anyway.
I'll, I'll clarify, depending on the width of the sidewalk within the public right-of-way, the setback of the buildings is, is very likely to respond to that, so the wider the sidewalk within the right-of-way, the closer the buildings will likely be designed to the public right-of-way.
Right.
So there's variability permitted within the code.
Right.
One last comment, you don't have to.
Simply to clarify, that, that last question was, on this exhibit, as you can see, there's a 10-foot wa- uh, walkway, if we were to add two or five feet, you may have the 15 to, to give you that width. On the last, on the previous exhibit, I think there was six, so to get to that 15, you're starting that on both sides, you can see how you're quickly pushing it out. Right now, we're 86 feet, if you were going to add five feet on each side, 86 feet from, from face to face. If you add, just add in eight more feet on each side, you start to stay, and you start to see how they're widening, getting wider and wider. It's not, Kathy, where we are from the total width, it's where the, the green space, the tree lawn, to the edge of that sidewalk, that's where we're trying to maintain that, somewhere between probably 12 to 15 feet, so you can have that appropriate walking distance, that's what we're...
Yeah, you know, and some of that, you know, with the green space that you have, which I think is really attractive, and I think the, the process is attractive, a lot of it has to do, like in Paris, when you look at the different streets, how they're laid out, and the, and the dimensions like this, they change trees, you know, they use London plane trees, very large trees, big canopies to get that enclosed space, and I'm sure we're going to get there with that, this design, but you make adjustments to, to the design, you know?
Counsel, with your pleasure.
So what is the, could you remind me again, which of these plans are we being asked to vote on tonight?
You're being asked to approve the section that is shown on the slide here, this is the shared vehicle and bicycle lane.
Okay. I would just comment that downtown in Columbus, this is very common for, now they've got all these bicycles in the roadway, and if you look at, like Gay Street, where you do have the condominiums and the beautiful...
Boulevard.
Boulevard and everything, the bicycles are riding right on the road, there is no additional space that's been given to them, and they're doing parallel parking and all. So I think that it's hard for us to envision, because we've never had this here locally, but if you do look at seriously urban looks, this is not an uncommon feature in order to get that feel that was earlier talked about, it, it's not a massive feel, you know, it's where you're feeling like you're on top of the buildings, that you're walking right there, and they're right there, and you're interacting with them, and, as well as the, the road systems, I mean, and I, I, I've been down there all the time, and it's, you don't feel unsafe or anything like that, I mean, because the landscape helps. Now, you don't have a boulevard here because you're pulling the boulevard outward, as opposed to, unlike Gay Street, where there, the boulevard's in the middle of, of the east-west road, but...
There's a lot of patio, and the traffic moves very slowly down there.
Right.
Outdoor dining and, and the parking on the side, as I've used it myself, so I agree with you, and Tim as well.
I guess, sitting here listening to all the discussion, I have, have, I guess, been persuaded that in this particular neighborhood, we could live with, with the bikes in the road, and, and I would, I would guess that, you know, most people would elect to, if the pedestrian traffic is indeed that heavy, they would elect to just walk their bikes or park their bikes, and, you know, if they're not comfortable riding in the street, so I guess I, I've changed my mind, I've evolved, and I'm comfortable with this.
So, I mean, I can put a motion on the floor to approve this, but help me understand, we want to make sure we get the proper iteration, and this would be staff's recommendation.
Correct, as described in condition two.
As described in, in condition two, so I'd move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Anne, would you call for the vote?
No.
Sorry. Mayor Luckleyter?
Yes.
Mrs. Voring?
No.
Vice Mayor Salee?
Yes.
Mr. Gerber?
No.
Ms. Janice Zurker?
Yes.
And Mr. Keenan?
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, there's a, a couple items. The first one, there was information in your packet with regard to a refund request for a Board of Zoning Appeals application. There's a staff report, the request is made by John and Tricia Buckley, they have, they had their case heard on May 23 before BZA, BZA turned down their request, and they felt that they should be entitled to a refund based upon the fact that we should have given them additional information on their chances of success in getting their appeal or not. Based upon our review of the facts of the case, we've made the recommendation that the, the fee, or the request for the refund be denied, and so we are bringing that to council for your concurrence or disagreement with our recommendation.
Counsel, wish to comment?
Tim, I've read the record, and it looks to me like we've been pretty clear all the way, all the way down the line, there were three different opportunities for them to hear that it was non-refundable, so...
Any other comment? Mike, would you or someone else like to make a motion that we approve staff's recommendation?
I'll move we approve staff's recommendation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Anne, would you call for the vote, please?
Ms. Janice Zurker? Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Luckleyter?
Yes.
Mr. Gerber?
Yes.
Mrs. Voring? Vice Mayor Salee?
Yes.
And Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Thank you.
And the second item we have relates to an update on the President's Cup. Before the last council meeting, there was some information that was sent to council with regard to an idea that's come out of some of the discussions with the PGA and the various members of the Stakeholder's Committee, and it relates to a golf ball community art campaign, and we have put some additional information at your desk this evening, providing a recap of the events that we see happening or occurring during the President's Cup, which are consistent with what City Council approved at your previous discussions, and this item is a new item that was not discussed previously, and so we are bringing this forward this evening to request any feedback that council has on this. There are also a couple other items that were identified that we're continuing at staff level to work on, the new concepts that were highlighted in yellow in this packet. We recognize that not having the information ahead of time to council makes it difficult, but we're working under some crunch timelines with regard to ideas that occur, and we're looking at, instead of having the 18 golf balls that we look at, having nine because of...